We're gonna go ahead and get started. If I could get everybody to stand, we will have the invitation. Gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity of being able to be here today. We ask for your guidance and your patience with us. We ask that you allow us to do the best things that we can do for our whole community. We ask your blessing on this community. We also ask that you watch after our troops, those who protect us. We ask for your compassion and your love and your protection in everything we do. At least things we ask, amen. Let the record show that we have a quorum here today and we'll call a meeting to order and Councilman Roscoe's gonna lead us into pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We would like to especially welcome all the visitors that we have today. Some of our youth advisory council, we want to welcome them, first of all. And then we'd like to welcome your parents that are here. We have Mrs. Kirby, Mr. Checo, and Mrs. Lee Allen. We want to thank y'all for being here. I can invite you back anytime. We're glad everybody else is here. Brian, we're glad you're here. Lincoln, Representative Gill, and Larry, we're glad y'all are here with us today. Thanks to Ramon and Chi for being here. And we need your assistance here a little later in the meeting, so. We are, first of all, today, we're going to ask if there's any public comment that anyone would like to make before a meeting starts. If not, we're going to go ahead and open our meeting for a public hearing. And this public hearing is in regard to the taxation of tangible personal property in transit, which would otherwise be exempt pursuant to the Texas Tax Code, Section 11.253. Is anyone that would like to make comments about that? Possible taxation or net ordinance? We open the floor. Since we have no comment, then we will close the public hearing. And at this time, we would like to have the oath of office to the new members of the Mulsanne Youth Advisory Council.
I saw this line up coming up there, but I can see you because everyone will take pictures. There's not it?
If you don't raise your rock hand, and we're gonna be after names. I can state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Youth Advisory Council.
Of Youth Advisory Council.
Of the City of Mulsanne.
Of the City of Mulsanne.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. When the meeting's over, then we'll get some other pictures that the mayor doesn't forget.
I would like to present these plaques. And the plaques read, "By the authority of the Mayor of the City of Mulsanne and the Mulsanne City Council, we give these to you and you are hereby appointed to the Mulsanne Youth Advisory Council." Congratulations. We want to thank you for your service and we appreciate all the time and your comments and your knowledge that we will be able to acquire later on. And we want to thank you for doing this on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Okay. First thing on our agenda today is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting that was held on September the 12th of this year. I pray that you've all reviewed those minutes and all opened the floor for a motion to approve them.
Make the motion to approve motions on September 12th. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting of September the 19th of 2018.
I'll second it.
Yeah. We've got a couple of seconds. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider the receipts from the Labor Day Rotary Club roping for hotel motel tax. And even your packets. The total receipts from the Labor Day Roping that the staff recommended was $1,830. I'll make a motion that we approve that amount.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any question for discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing is to consider a request and receipts from the Mulsanne Roadrunner Motorcycle Rally that was held in March for hotel motel tax funds. I believe the total amount of receipts in our packet was over $2,200 and we had previously recommended or approved $2,000, is that right?
Actually, they had not brought a previous, a request, but the request that's included in your packet is for $2,000.
Okay.
Even though the receipt's a six.
Qualifying receipts could be.
$2,000 is historically been the maximum amount that's been ordered by council. Make the motion to approve $2,000 for the Mulsanne Roadrunner.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve $2,000 for that request. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance number 0460-1011 to tax tangible personal property in transit, which would otherwise be exempt pursuant to the Texas Tax Code. David, I'm gonna let you explain all this.
Mayor, I'll make an attempt at it. It's my understanding that Brian's gonna be my backup.
It's true.
Or probably should be the lead. It's my understanding, at present time, we tax goods that are stored in a facility owned by someone else. If those goods are not moved, they're 175 days. So, I think that probably we have one case, and it's the soybeans that are stored here for the organic processing that goes on in Mulsanne. I know that when we watch our tax base annually, it could fluctuate by as much as $10 million based on how much, I mean, how much soybeans are stored there at the facility. If the council does not adopt this ordinance, then those products in transit or goods in transit will not be taxed. For us to continue to tax them, then the council must adopt this ordinance.
This is just the legislature and the special call session made these changes. Again, there's a short window, October 1st of this year to the end of the year, December 31st, for councils to decide whether to adopt an ordinance that will allow the city to continue to tax such products, these goods in transit.
If in a timeline here in law. In order for us to tax them in 2012, then the council must approve this ordinance prior to December 31st of 2011. If the council fails to or elects to not adopt that ordinance, then those, if those meet the goods in transit definition, then they will not be taxed in 2012. The council could come back in 2012 and approve an ordinance to tax them in 2013. Now, I guess the question that raises, do we have to adopt an ordinance every year? Or is that?
Yeah, I think, from what I saw, is once you've passed it, then you don't have to do it again. I mean, it just continues on, but if you don't pass it this year, then you could pass it next year.
And so. Yeah. So is this something that in essence has always been there, but now it's up to? I think we got the option a few years ago to exempt that.
Yeah.
If we didn't do anything to tax them. Now we can, it kind of changed it where if we don't do something, then it's exempt. But we have never exempted this in the House. We have, we have been taxing. Right. If, if those soybeans meet the definition of goods in transit under the statute, we have to tax them. And that's the only, the only product I can think of that we would have in town. This is, this is somewhat of a, I don't know if it's an economic development tool or anti, or anti-competitive, Texas city competitive tool. If you had large amounts, I mean, we're talking about $10 million and that's a lot, but if you had a Walmart at the youth center that was $100 million. This city did tax it and this didn't, then that could determine where that went. Also, New Mexico does not tax the goods in transit. So, with us being this took close to the border, that, in some cities, it would provide a competitive advantage for New Mexico and Texas could not, could not compete at that level because we had to tax them. This gives us the opportunity to not tax them. I don't see that we have that competitive situation. The soybeans that are stored here are stored here for organic process, certified organic process. I don't know anywhere else in the state of Texas that does that. Probably very few places in the United States that is certified to organically process those soybeans.
But you're not certain soybeans is the only item that's under this?
I'm not certain, no. No. If there is, it means there are corn or cotton or some of those things. I would suppose that they'd be the same as soybeans. I wouldn't say that they're either. Of course, that kind of raises a question of, and I don't know enough about corn storage, but if I own silo, and you've got corn, and you've got corn, and you've got corn, and you've got corn, then to the tax bill, we go proportionally to who owns the corn. In other words, soybeans are all owned by one company, so they get the tax fee.
But this is only if it stays there more than 175 days, exactly?
No, less than.
Less than.
Less than.
Less than.
175 days.
And it can be moved even by moving across the street. That satisfies the movement of it.
Yeah.
I would personally like to kind of table this until next month's meeting, since I haven't still fitted under the guidelines, just so I can do a little more research on that matter.
Sure.
That most of good. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table this ordinance. Is there any other discussion? Until next month. If not, all those in favor of tabling this consideration?
Actually, postpone it.
Just postponing consideration, okay? Till next month's meeting? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries and we will postpone that till December. The next thing on our agenda is to receive comments and discuss a youth curfew ordinance. And I believe you've all received a couple of the information in your packet.
Mayor, I think my discretion down the avenue has brought some information that you couldn't, had intention of being here tonight, she had a family emergency late this afternoon and could not be here. Would this be something where I, you know, postpone until, or should we bring it?
That is possible.
Well, we could still discuss it.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to have a little discussion.
You can, you can, what the agenda calls for is to receive comments, if there may be some, and to discuss the merits of it.
Yeah, I would like the Youth Advisory Council to give us their opinion of the ordinance because that's basically the folks that it affects in the first place.
Jones.
Yes.
I think you've been nominated to be the best mayor.
Please tell the rest of them.
The Youth Advisory Council has decided to further discuss this issue at our next meeting. We're still a little undecided and we would like to research and discuss more of that. And yes, I am on the Youth Advisory Council, but as a private citizen, I would like to put in some input. And yes, some of this was in your packet as a recommendation to the Youth Advisory Council, but since they're undecided, I would like to make my thoughts as a citizen known. There have been many court challenges to curfew laws around the nation, and so far courts are split on this issue. With no U.S. Supreme Court ruling on the issue, there's no easy answer to offer. In general, lower courts recognize that curfews impose restrictions to the First Amendment and have stripped down many laws that impose too heavy a burden on the exercise of youth's freedom of speech and assembly. In this, they stand their ground on the fact that constitutional rights do not mature and come about at a certain age, but a person is born with constitutional rights. The Youth Advisory Council exchanged a few emails with the City of Lubbock, Lubbock's Chief of Police, Mr. Ellis, about their juvenile curfew. He stated, "In years past, we would have spiked rates of vandalism, thefts, vehicular burglaries, and teen parties, so we enforced the curfew. Following this, we replied and said, 'So in the City of Lubbock, it was necessary for the ordinance to be enforced, but do you find it a need for a small community that has not experienced significant crime to enforce the curfew? And do you agree or disagree that curfews should be left to parent, left to parents and crimes should be left to the police?'" He replied and said, "If Mulsanne truly needs the ordinance and it is enforced, I believe that it should definitely be enforced in a fashion that's right for the community if enforcement is needed. And I agree that parenting responsibilities belong to the parents." By this, we took it that Mr. Ellis, Chief of Police, was, had a mixed opinion along with the U.S. Supreme Court. But now I would like to share my thoughts on this issue. In a free country, it is not our place to decide what is appropriate for our neighbor to do or not to do. Freedom doesn't require proof to justify one's decisions. If a teen wants to take a stroll and gaze at the moon, that's her decision. If a teen feels it's too hot during the day and prefers jogging at night or early in the morning, that's his decision. If a teen wants to go to the park and count blades of grass at 3:00 in the morning, from what harm do we suffer? Freedom is not the result of exceptions to the law. The laws are exceptions to freedom. And in saying this, I agree that if a teenager or an adult is out at late hours of the night and they are breaking the law, then the police should enforce the law and take care of the situation without having the government jeopardizing anyone's freedom. Juvenile curfews have expanded across the state to address a public concern of juvenile crime and violence. A study was done in California that studied the analysis of arrest, reported crime, and mortality rate. I learned in my research that at the end of this study, there was no doubt that supported the hypothesis that a juvenile curfew lessened the crime at times. At times, Mulsanne has experienced some crime and violence that takes place at night. In my research, I discovered that Mulsanne only has one police officer patrolling during the night. With this being a fact, I find that some problems in this town do go hand in hand with youth being out at night. I also state that rather than punishing all of the youth of this town, it should be looked into that there be more police on patrol at night and that the police take responsibility and take care of the crime and violence that might be taking place at night. It seems unfair and unjust that the youth's freedom be jeopardized when a problem may be solved by an increase in patrol and an increase in police activity. I also have a concern that if the government jeopardizes the youth's freedom, it will cause teenagers to rebel and try to prove a point, leading to this community receiving something they simply did not bargain for. If this happens, how will the police enforce the ordinance with just one patrolling officer? Also, after discussing this issue among fellow teenagers, many of us feel that if the citizens of this town, that the citizens of this town are looked down on, are looking down on us because we have been stereotyped as young teenagers who like to stir up trouble. This seems unfair to us that we are being looked down upon simply due to our age. I hope that no one will confuse my disagreement with a lack of understanding or a lack of respect. I understand the point that is being made. I understand that some people in this town simply want to keep the youth safe and want to extend their caring nature as they strive for better for the youth. I want the same. I want a bright future for my fellow youth, but in the same realm, I also strive for justified rights for our fellow youth. And I believe that if there are youth out doing illegal things, then the police can teach them the lesson they deserve without jeopardizing their freedom. I believe that issues should be resolved by the police officers as it is their responsibility rather than punishing the youth of this town. Also, there may be misguided youth in this town, but there are also plenty of parents who are capable of setting a curfew for their own child. Some parents choose to do this and some do not, but whichever they choose, the fact is still true that the child has a parent and parenting should be left to guardians. It is not the city's responsibility to parent a child. It is the city's responsibility to keep the streets safe, which can be done by the police officers who receive a salary from the parents themselves as taxpayers. As stated before, I understand where the concerns are coming from, but there is no significant reason that allows the government to step in and put our freedom at stake. Being a citizen and a youth in this town, I have carefully and open-mindedly researched this topic. I am very blessed to be a part of this community and very proud to be a youth of Mulsanne. In fulfilling my standing as a youth, I have given my opinions and stated what I think is justified and right. However, no matter what the city council decides, I will uphold their decision with respect. Thank you for your time.
That'd be good, Harrison.
So, I mean, have the other young people want to make a statement? How about the rest of the council?
Well, yes. First off, and I really do appreciate the effort, whoever was involved in the researches and the statement put into it, that's, it really hasn't been long enough, enough ago that I can't remember what being a teenager was like, even though some people think that. But I had a curfew when I was a teenager. And just as an example, do you have a curfew at home? Harrison? Everybody here?
Yeah.
Mom and dad say they're here by this time, one helps.
Yeah.
Okay. You think it's fair?
Of course not. It depends. It depends on the situation.
Sometimes fair, sometimes not.
Oh, no, I never.
I pretty much felt the same way when I was your age, too. I really did. Any of you ever break a curfew?
Yes.
Yes.
So did I. And I suffered consequences. Unfortunately, not every parent does what yours does. I wish they did. I really wish they did. But it just doesn't happen. And sometimes, people are forced to do things like this because other people don't do what they're supposed to do. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. I'm not saying that I'm against it, yet. I'm still kind of sitting on the fence. But one thing that I really don't think some of y'all may take into consideration or haven't really thought about yet, the city is limited on how much money we have to spend. Most of you have been involved in this on a kind of grasp of that idea as far as, this is what we have, this is what we need, this is what we can do with our money. Our police chief would love to have, because we've had this discussion many times, would love to have more officers to put out there on the streets. He really would. Fact is, the money's not there. I wish we could afford to have two or three officers every night, but we can't. And in order to take care of some of the problems, we may have to consider something like this. It's not an infringement on your rights, or at least I don't see it that way. To me, it's more of a way to see that everybody kind of has the same freedom and same restriction that you have, if they don't get it home. And I hope you can understand that if it, if it comes to the point of where we do as a council vote to have a curfew. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not because I haven't discussed it with the rest of the council and I don't know their opinions. And like I said, I think by and large, the teenagers in Mulsanne, Texas are as good as they are anywhere. I'm proud of our young people in this town. I think most of you try to do what you're supposed to do. You try to lead productive lives. You know right from wrong, but unfortunately, there are a few that don't. And sometimes other measures have to be taken. So, I guess I'm just saying, if we do decide to do something like this, don't take it personally, because I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody. I think y'all are all good kids and I admire you greatly for doing what you do in your group. I think a lot of people, a lot of my places need to do the same thing. I think what you've set for an example will bleed out into the rest of the teenage community tremendously, so that other people will pick up on what you do, the way you act and the way you conduct yourselves, which is only a positive thing. And that's not all I have to say.
Very good. Comes to the old truth. You know, you're absolutely right in the comments that you made and Councilman Parker's right on his comments. It's, you know, I wish Mrs. Hettington could be here tonight. But you know, the request for this to be on the agenda had seven different reasons why they would like to have a curfew. If you think real hard about all seven reasons, every one of those can be solved at home.
Can be why?
Can be solved at home. One of the things that I've always had a very, very difficult time is allowing any government entity to take away any of my civil rights. I don't think that's irresponsible. But yet they did it a lot of different ways and the problem to get into is once they start, sometimes you don't want them to stop. I don't feel like it's fair at all to punish you, the ones in our community that show responsibility, to punish you for those in the community that don't. So, it makes it a tough deal, you know? And you talk about not having enough patrolmen on duty and to actually leave this in the hands of the police to take care of the problem. You know, we could have more. You know, we could have more. That's a pretty simple thing. All we have to do is raise taxes. But if you'll think about it, there are a whole lot of people in this community that pay taxes, that actually did their job when their kids were growing up. So it's not fair for them to have to pay more taxes because the rest of the community didn't take care of their job. One of the things that you, even if you had more police officers and, you know, I was privileged to listen to a lot of the comments earlier when you had your meeting. And one of the things that the police chiefs are going to tell you is if you even have three officers on duty at the same time, it doesn't matter how good our officers are, but what you do is you allow them to make that determination and to make that enforcement. This is going to be their opinion. You know, and you talked about the fact that if you can use that law to make it work wherever you want to, then if you've got a group of young people that are playing basketball at midnight in the city park and they won't ignore them and move on to somebody else, it's still the opinion of that law enforcement officer. And another problem that you get into is the enforcement of that curfew by the judicial system. If the people that are in those positions don't want to punish the people that caused the problem, then it doesn't do any good to have the curfew in the first place. Doesn't do any good to hire the policeman to enforce the laws that you put in place. So, you know, it takes a lot of assistance from a lot of different people to make all this work. I would like to have more time to think about it. I'd like to talk to more people. I would like to visit with Mrs. Higginson. And I would like to put it off for a while for y'all to have more time to contemplate what you think. It's about something we have to do today. And I would make a motion that we to table this.
They're driving out an action item on the higher.
But I would like to, I will be here next month at the meeting and I'd like to have it roll back to the meeting in January.
What I might suggest council think about is to maybe call a public hearing to advertise it as a public hearing to...
That could be a great one.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I would really like to get a lot more input from your peers and your parents. I would almost challenge you to write something real short. Why do you feel the way you do it? Whether it's we need a curfew or we don't need it.
You know, I think that even the youth council is unsure about their registration.
But my other half of that deal is ask your parents to do the same thing. See how they feel about it. Have them write down something real short. Ask your friends to do it, your friends' parents. We really do need input on this from as many people as possible. Because there's always things that will crop up that we hadn't thought of.
It is a tough, tough subject. I mean, when I was your guys' age, I heard my dad tell me a hundred times, nothing good happens after midnight. But I'm one of the, kind of like, very black, I'm one of the most anti-government infringing in my personal life. There is, I mean, to today, that's how I stand, but with this issue, I'm torn because nothing, I can say I truly agree with it now, nothing good really ever happens after midnight unless it's a rarity. And that's when a lot of the bad stuff that goes on in this town happens. So I'd like to, I'm with these guys. I don't know what the right answer is and I'd like to hear some more.
My dad always said that too, but that was his bedtime. You know, and I would also like to have some comments from the religious sector right now. You know, a lot of this starts at home and there's a lot of it that carries on through that part of our life too. So maybe we could get some comments from them.
Any input would be great, as far as I'm concerned, from anywhere. It's a tough sector and it's going to take a lot of thought. And I don't want to do something that's counterproductive, but I don't want to do anything that is against the wishes of most of the community. Y'all have already seen this to some degree and know where we're coming from. We're not decision makers. We're supposed to be the ones that convey what the public wants. But without the public's input, it's kind of hard to do that sometimes. And we do need some input. We need to know, what do you think about it? What do your parents think about it? And everybody, what does your clergy think about it? Your teachers? Any input we can get, we would greatly appreciate it.
We're making notes, Mayor, to call a public hearing to advertise that for the January meeting.
All right, and I want to thank you again for your thoughts. That's good. I'd like to have more of them and I hope you'll all ask your parents and your friends and stuff to get more input into what you think. And maybe by the next time we consider this, maybe we'll have the perfect answer. At my, we table it again and we'll pull up, so. Okay, all right, thank you all. The next thing on the agenda is to receive a report from the Youth Advisory Council. We're going to turn the floor over to you.
Our council discussed the youth curfew ordinance and we heard comments from Chief Freya here in the office room. Mr. Brunson and Leanne tried to figure things out, but we all agreed in the end to research it more and find out more stuff. Our youth summit is January 24th through the 22nd. And our council this year was asked to be presenters at the summit. It seems that no other youth advisory council in the state of Texas does things quite like we do. They're more of a community service than what we do. We take part in our city government. We go through rotation and learn about each job and what makes the city relevant. They've asked us to be presenters and they want to know more about what we do. And we have a fundraiser in January, our brisket dinner, like last year, it's January 8th, it's a Sunday at noon. And we've asked if everybody would come out and support us so we can get money so we can attend the youth summit. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I think y'all should really be committed that they would ask you to be a part of the youth summit. I think that's very exceptional. It's really neat. Is this the only fundraiser you have scheduled so far?
Yes.
Do you think this will do?
We have two type of events.
Good, all right. Y'all let us know when those are going to be extended. I'd participate in that and we want you to always use the council and the staff or whatever we can help you do.
Do well. I don't think that'd be a problem, actually.
No, but I think that's needed and so you should let us do that. And we want to wish you luck on those fundraisers. The next thing on our agenda is to review the City of Mulsanne investment policy.
Mayor, that policy was included in the agenda, in fact, and annually that the council is required to review that policy. The city still needs some needs of the city. Staffs review the policy. We don't recommend any changes to the policy. We believe it's a sound policy and a service plan.
So do you have any questions about that policy? Do you like to have a motion to approve that?
Actually, we'll just make note that you reviewed it and the one that we have is the same.
Next thing on our agenda is to designate an official newspaper for the City of Mulsanne.
Our other legal advice is brought to our attention that cities are required annually to designate an official newspaper. We have, since the beginning of time, used the Mulsanne Journal as our official newspaper. And staff would recommend that council officially approve the Mulsanne Journal as the city's official newspaper.
So they were not designated official newspaper?
They were a long time ago designated official.
We have a motion that we designate the Mulsanne Journal as the official newspaper for the City of Mulsanne.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. This is a re-discussion. If not all those in favor, say aye. Vote opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to receive the investment summary for quarter ending September the 30th. The trustees have all reviewed that investment summary and I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Does we have a discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye. Vote opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is administrative reports. I'm going to let Paige give that.
Thanks, Mayor. The cap and improvement projects, wastewater treatment plan, that's ready. We got the copy of the plans that were completed, plans that were submitted to TCEQ for their final review. Engineers tell us it'll take them a couple of weeks to do that and that should go out for bid. We hope that in the January meeting, the council will bid, review, bid, proceed for that project and consider awarding bids at that time. So it is moving forward. The city Christmas luncheon will be held on December the 2nd, not December the 7th. It was noted in your package. Friday, be at the country club again this year, maybe at noon. And we'll get some notice about prior to that. Also, on December the 16th, the city will host a retirement reception for Janet Clayburn. You know, Janet's going to be retiring at the end of the year. So we will have a reception at the Bay County Electric Community Room. And that will be from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock that afternoon. Also want to report that we again hosted a blood drive, the city did in October, we collected, there were 32 units of blood collected that day. We continue to exceed their expectations.
Lead for the community, all right.
Yeah. We, we pretty much have as many donors as they can have. So we're really proud of the city employees that step up and participate in that. Pretty much those that are not city employees have our time getting in. We fill those spots and I'm really proud of our folks for doing that.
Kind of gets you in the Halloween spirit, too.
Yeah, whatever. I did want to report that we had our first best golf tournament. We can go from last Saturday. Pastor Titten, who's designing the course, had the course laid out. He brought out some temporary baskets and he wanted to run a tournament to test the course, to see how the course bared. He set up nine holes and then he actually set up an A to B hole and set up 11 holes. Thirty-three players, all from out of town that showed up. Now, I don't know if y'all can remember two weeks ago, but it was windy and cold that morning. Then they played till 5:00 o'clock that afternoon and started at 9:00 o'clock.
Wow.
And played in that wind. And had a ball. I talked to them and went down there. They loved the course, they loved the setup. So now we've got the course designed pretty much finalized. We'll start wearing some tee pads shortly and then we've got the permanent baskets. We'll get those set. Hopefully by January into February, we'll have a desk golf course that folks can go play on.
We could have a youth tournament.
You can have a youth tournament or you can have an elbow.
I do.
How about youth against all teams?
Oh.
How about youth against all teams?
I don't even know how to play, so.
No, we won't be able to go. Not us, Al.
What'd he say?
1:00 in the morning.
I'm sending you. I will be able to go.
He said it's like you.
We'll start at 9:00 in the morning, just like they do the regular, we'll just do it on Tuesday.
We have school. We have to chorey.
One other thing, the fuel farm at the airport has been ordered, it's scheduled for installation over the AT. And when we looked at the safety out there, we first thought we could use the tank that was there. When the distributor came out or the salesman came out and looked at it, actually the tank doesn't meet some requirements that we need to meet. So we're putting the whole complete unit in. At one time, we thought we were looking at $60,000 to $80,000 to do that. We're going to be able to do it to $30,000. That's a big tank and a credit card equipment. So hopefully soon after that, we'll have that in service. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
The great thing that adds into the city couple of years? We went to Dallas? Oh.
That's all, that's all news now.
Made her blush. Yeah, that's all over Facebook. City Secretary Leanne Dolman has been elected to serve as the president of the Texas Municipal Clerk Association.
That's awesome.
We went, several of us went to the banquet where she was installed, made her presentation. I'm not going to say she exceeded our expectations because we extracted a lot out. She did a great job with her presentation. We're really proud of Leanne and the way that she does represent this. And thank you for remaining in there.
It was a really nice ovation. It's nice. It was really nice.
And I was honored that all of y'all were there.
It was pretty good. And congratulations to you on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Anything else? Go Mules. Now, y'all are going to have to step up on that view.
I wasn't there, but...
Y'all don't follow us when we do it.
Do what?
We are all, is that still rolling?
Let's go on, yeah.
What?
Anyways, we're all...
That's old folks, as you just want to go along.
Y'all, he said old folks first. Okay, we're pursuing it.
We'll be glad to help.
Okay, sweet, man.
Good luck to the Mules playoffs.
Thank you.
We already started last fall, so...
Yep.
42 minutes left.
Yep, the girls won on Saturday.
On Saturday, yes, we won.
Good.
Forty-four to thirty-four.
Good. Good luck in your season.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Anything else?